You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen for June 30, 2021, meeting to order. Item one, to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from June 2, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and any corrections, edits, or changes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a question, please, sir. I know we did interrupt your committee, but special meetings normally do not allow correspondence or...
Oh, approval.
However, if I'm not mistaken, a two-furry vote over the board, either one could be added.
I believe so. Yeah. Not at a special meeting. No, not at a special meeting. And actually, could we approve the minutes of the special meeting?
And as you're saying that, yeah, no, we're not...
Yeah, and so we'll have to strike that. Thank you for the... Yeah, we can't approve minutes for special meetings. All right. Item two, a motion to go into executive session. Actually, we have items two, four, and six are all executive session items. Item two is to discuss pending tax appeals. Item four is to discuss strategy in a pending matter of Shoreline Shellfish LLC at L versus the Town of Branford. And item six, I don't believe there's representative...
Can we strike that?
Yeah, so we'll remove item six from the agenda, and we'll just deal with item two and four. With that, we will invite Attorney Perito in to discuss item two, Attorney Cortella in to discuss item four. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion to go back and do regular sessions? Item three...
Can I ask a question, please, related to that, Attorney Yancey? How do the tax control attorneys get paid? Are they part of the overall legal budget or is that something separate?
There's a line item for...
Line item is paid by case, is it paid by hour?
Hour.
Paid by hour?
Yep. So, can I get a motion, we'll go to item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve the proposed settlements of the pending tax appeals cases. I'll just go through them one by one. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for the estate of J. Smith?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for 101 Stony Creek Road?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass you the answer. A motion to approve the proposed settlement which results in the withdrawal of 11 New Wago Avenue, and the settlement is with Kids Island.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass you the answer. Thank you, thank you, Attorney Perito. Item five, to consider and if appropriate, consider action in the pending matter of Shoreline Shellfish LLC at L versus the Town of Branford Docket. Now, Docket, it's under minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the proposed settlement as discussed in executive session with Attorney Cortella?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Question, please. Again, I don't mean to hear your name, but I'm wondering why the Shellfish Commission hasn't met. That has been close to a year. And I've checked their agenda, it's never been... It's always been canceled. The reason I'm interested is because Jarvis Creek, according to people who live down there, is a real mess. I wanted to speak to them, I wrote the letter about a year ago, and it seems like the Shellfish Commission never meets.
Okay, well, I'll check and see, maybe they're going to be meeting again now that things are opening back up. Item seven, to consider and appropriate, and if appropriate, approve request... Oh, I'm sorry, we took that one off the agenda. Item eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve request for Brian Droney, lead tradesman, to waive the bid for the abatement and demolition of a structure located at 26 Church Street and award the contract to True Blue in the amount of $52,500. Brian, welcome.
Hello. Yes, I request to consider the waiver of the requirements of advertising and bidding for an abatement and demolition of the Bacon House on the parcel that sits on 26 Church Street. True Blue Environmental Services gave me a proposal for $52,500 to provide all construction management and site controls, removal and disposal of fuel and sludge from an above-ground storage tank, abatement and removal and disposal of hazardous materials as noted in a report, raising removal and disposal of structure to one foot below grade and filling in the foundation to grade.
And I believe in the packet, we all have responses from three other companies, correct? That exceed that amount by a significant dollar amount. I think they range from $73,000 up to $85,000. Correct. So this was the piece of property that is adjacent to the community center. They had a house, we did not, as part of the project, have the demolition under that contract. They're waiting to the end of this, to the completion of that project. Funding is in place through the appropriation and, as well as, I believe, the general fund. This was used for some training. I think it's time now that we take the house down. I know there's been some questions if there's a rush to do it. Certainly, there wasn't a... I don't think there's anything urgent or pressing that needs to be done now, but I do think it is in our interest to finally take the house down. It is becoming an eyesore, or it is an eyesore. Potentially is an issue with, you know, people hanging around. I know staff has to go over there and keep it boarded up, and I think it'd be a benefit to the neighborhood as well as the programs that, for Canoe Brook and the community center to have that building removed, and I think it's time to move forward. So I thank Brian for going out and soliciting a number of pricing on this to get it to a price that seems fair to the town within a current appropriation and get the job done.
I just have a couple of quick things, and thank you for coming here. You went through all the trouble to, make this, I guess, for the future. You went through all the trouble to get the RFPs, you know, to send them out. Wouldn't it have been easier, you know, to keep it cleaner just to send out, you know, an advertisement for it at that time?
I guess so.
I'm just, you know, because it, you know, it just makes it, you don't know who got it, you don't know how they went out, and it always leaves question. Of course, we all get questions all the time, and I think the price is a good price, but for the future, I think it would make it easier all the way around if we sent it out that way.
Right.
And again, one of the questions I had was there, you know, what was the timing? Was there a rush? But, you know, and I do understand from doing this stuff in the town for many years, you know, if you go out and solicit prices like you have, it really meets the requirements of the bidding anyway, except for the advertising part.
Right, and that's what we're waiving. We're waiving the advertising part.
Yeah, just the advertising part, correct.
Not the competitive.
So we're really not doing the competitive bidding part, which was the understanding of many.
Yeah.
And the only other question I had a concern on, and maybe you can answer it, is the document that we have from True Blue is expired by probably two and a half months from the time.
No, I spoke to them, and they are going to hold the price.
Okay. All right, that's it, that's all I got.
Want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Moved to second, any further discussion? The board?
I have a couple of questions. I'm not down over what the selectmen were referring to. So in other words, this is not a waiver of bid to be competitive to remove the building, it's a waiver of bid to somehow not advertise. Am I getting that right?
That's my understanding of the statute. When I read, when I read it and when I've used it through finances, that, you know, if you just waive a bid, and again, this is the understanding that I've had through the years, if I'm wrong, someone can correct it, but the understanding was is when just waiving a bid, you're just going out and picking someone and so forth, but they said the rules allow for you to go out and get prices, and therefore, you do have more than one price. What it doesn't do is send it out so everybody can see it in the paper, but so there's not one person just getting it. There were RFPs sent out to several people, so there are several prices, and it's a practice that's been used, I know, through the town for years.
Fair enough, but that's the conversation we've been having for a while, that, you know, and I didn't mean to pick on my pal Alex, but, you know, he went out and looked at a few prices for the trees, and I said, well, he looked at the prices, he looked at them, what about all the other people that wanted to get on the trees, for example? And there's another example of that. So I really don't see how it serves the purpose of the town to go out there and just, you know, get a few prices, skip the advertising, and then finally give the bid to somebody who, you know, I'm not even sure why they deserve it at this point, other than the fact that they came in lower than those terms that you happened to look at. I'm not, I don't follow that, I'm really sorry about that. In short form, I'm not sorry about it, I just don't understand it. The second thing is, you know, there's a letter, and I mentioned it to Tristan before you guys came out of executive session, from Costanza, and you know that he and I and several other citizens are interested in moving out over in that area, particularly Atlantic Wire, and I asked if that can be read as part of this agenda item. He asked for it to be read under correspondence, but given the fact that it relates to the agenda item, I think it's fair to read his letter. If you don't read it, I guess I'm going to have to, but somebody should read it because it is very relevant to what we're talking about here, so if you at least...
Yeah, do you have the letter?
I think just...
Oh, I can be on my phone.
Yeah, if you have, do you have it?
I don't have it, I wish I did.
All right, well, I get to, Mr. Costanza did send a letter at the end of the day, or later this afternoon, which stating his concern, he didn't want this to be acted on, he didn't know what the rush was. I think that concern of Mr. Costanza was addressed by the board and even through the questioning of Selectman Dunbar. It's not a rush, it's not a rush, it's something that needs to be done. So with that, we do have a motion and a second.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not going to give up that answer because we... The danger of the rush, the gentleman sitting here, he wants this done.
Yeah, and I think, you know what, and I'd like to see it done, I think, I think the community would like to see that.
Clearly, clearly, no, I'm not going to give up this...
Yeah, you haven't...
I'm sorry, you know, Mr. for Selectman, we don't have the heat left anymore. You're going to have to go a long way to shut me up, and it does put a matter of...
I'm going to read the letter.
If a man writes a letter, the man deserves to have the letter to print, not to you.
Yeah, we're not having it. Well, first of all, I decided, I will read his letter since it does pertain to this agenda item. Dear Selectman Cosgrove, after reviewing the revised agenda for tonight's special meeting, the Board of Selectmen, I take issue with item eight, number eight. To consider if appropriate, approve a request from Brian Droney, lead tradesman, to waive the bid of the abatement and demolition in the structure located at 26 Church Street and award the contract to True Blue in the amount of $52,500. After sitting vacant for the better of two years, what is the rush to abate and demolish the town-owned house at 26 Church Street without putting a contract out to bid? It seems that there have been other bid waivers in the recent past the town awarded, which causes the appearance of cronyism, which should be avoided even when not the case. The practice of awarding bid waivers makes the process discriminatory and exclusionary to other parties that can perform to specifications and possibly at a lower cost to the citizens of Branford. By waiving the bid process, it defeats the purpose written into our charter. This is no way to disparage the capabilities of parties awarded a contract without the bid. They may be the best choice for the project or commodity needed, but sometimes not. The practice of waiving bids should be used sparsely and cautiously, starting with the project before your board's night. The town claims clean hands in unfolding errors of Atlantic Wire demolition, but this project is clearly in the hands of the town. Although this project's scope is much smaller in scale, a clear project scope of precautionary measures and finite timeframe of completion should be addressed along with constant onsite supervision by the town. Are all those factors in written scope of work to be done by 26 Church Street? Please consider the safety of the immediate neighborhood, recreation field, and our new community house before the no-bid contract is awarded. The citizens of Branford should have to bear the risk of fugitive dust and exposed debris piles for months on end. Thank you for your anticipated serious attention to this matter, and vote now on this bid waiver sincerely. Robert A. Costanza. And to Mr. Costanza's questions, of course, yes, there'll be supervision, yes, there's monitoring, yes, there's testing that goes down throughout the process.
That's what he's asking, I'm sorry.
That's, so we're all in favor...
No, no, all in favor, because, you know, I'm not going to listen to this nonsense anymore. Here's the reality of it. He raises a fair point. If you're not going to have a legitimate way of, I'm sorry, a legitimate bid process, then just take it out of the charter, because this is not a legitimate bid process. So what, you take off the advertising, big deal. He goes to three of, you know, three other companies, this fellow, nothing against him, he's a very decent man, period, runs a great company, not his fault, but now we come down here and go belongs to True Blue? On what basis? On what basis? Did you go out and you check everybody else? Did you give everybody else? And here's the key word, a fair opportunity at this? That's what Mr. Costanza was asking, and I don't think he did. I've been pretty angry at hiring a company like True Blue, and I didn't have an opportunity to see it because somebody happened to look me up. That's extreme, and you know what really bothers me about this, is this is nothing new. We've been talking about this for the last three or four meetings. Like, how do you do your bidding or your waiving of the bidding?
Correct.
You know, it's not about advertising. I mean, if you're going to advertise, we're advertising so that everybody can see, if you don't go out and say, well, take these three companies to see what they do, and the one that comes in the lowest, you know, I think we're going down. What kind of government is that? I mean, I really would like an answer, and I think Mr. Costanza would too. And again, nothing against this stuff, I'm sure you're doing a great job.
Okay.
But is it fair? Is it, would you like it if it happened to Cosgrove and Strachan when you were in this? Would you like it?
I think that this has been a practice that not only this town, others do, they go out and solicit multiple pricing, and that's what they've, we've done, and that's what we've done in this price.
What our Congress says, what our town code says, if you're not following, it's a bid process. And again, how many times, quite frankly, do you need to hear me say the word "process"? How many times do you need to hear me say that before you realize that's the only reason I'm sitting here?
Right.
It's not a fair process. You want to give it to them, give it to them. Once again, you're on record, and now I'm on record, to say that this is not a fair and honest process, period.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, do what you want to do, whatever you want.
All right, thanks for your comments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Passed unanimously. Item nine. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
To consider, if appropriate, approval request from the Board of Education to approve a four-year lease agreement between the Town of Branford and Hewlett-Packard American Capital for 970 Chromebooks, licensing and protective shelves for a total cost of $382,997. Superintendent's here to present?
I just want, go ahead. I just have one, one quick comment. I know that I received an email earlier this morning from Mr. Dunbar where he asked me a question regarding why do we essentially not go out to bid for Chromebook leases? And I just wanted to provide background on that. Essentially, we avail ourselves to either state bid list or cooperative purchasing agreements, multi-state cooperative purchasing agreements. That's the case in this instance. And the reason that we do that is because we can avail ourselves to the better pricing as well as availability of products, and there's a bigger pool. So I just wanted to respond to that.
Thank you.
And I apologize. I didn't get back to you earlier.
Oh, that's fine. I knew you.
And so these, this is a four-year lease for these Chromebooks. It's, with, correct?
That is correct. It's a four-year.
Four years. So that's the total of over the four years for this. And this was also a part of the budget request.
That is correct. American Capital.
And this is also keeping in, in line with what we did last year. The same materials, right?
Same, same type of device.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions?
Question please for the superintendent. How do we get on that list? I understand the logic and the rationale with all the kind of prices, you know, you get quantity availability, but how do we all go about getting on that list? And what about the companies? Again, dealing with all kinds of disparities, you know, is it fair to the company that's not on that preferential list? We're, quite frankly, we're excluded from the consideration because, well, like I said, they're not on the list.
Well, Mr. Cook, I'll be honest with you. I am, I do not know specifically how the state selects their vendors, other than that there's an application process. So I would not categorize it as, one, it's a choice of whether you make application or not, and then it's a decision whether you're accepted or not. And the same is true for multi-state cooperatives. But I'm, I'm not knowledgeable on the specifics of that.
Again, Mr. Superintendent, it's a fair question. I think it is.
It is. And I think you can research. I don't know.
Well, somebody has to. I don't know if it's exactly my job to research. I think maybe the Board of Education should look into it and say, you know, why does this turn out the way it does? And again, you know, I don't know how many times I have to go through this. This is not directed to the superintendents. And again, how many times do I have to say, you know, what's fair around here? I mean, does that sound fair? They go, okay, you're not on a list, so you don't get considered for a $400,000 contract. Well, how do you get on the list? And with all respect to the, for Selectmen, he knows, I think, the world is, that's why we're with the superintendent. Well, we don't really know. So I'm sorry, but I think these are fair questions. I really hope. And I'm going to think you can take advantage of the opportunities. But it'd be nice to know how one goes about getting on that list. You know, at least with more of a case to look at. Is he the fair? I mean, you know, believe me, I've dealt with nothing with the state in the last three years. And I know the state, the state is not always fair. Matter of fact, I would say there's probably more unfair than they are fair in most cases. So again, something to look into, and though he won't do it, it's not necessarily your superintendent's hand, but it doesn't seem right. It doesn't.
All right.
This is off, this is off a state bid?
That, that's correct.
Right. So I can give some information on that.
If you would please.
The State of Connecticut solicits bids for all kinds of things, from trucks to bicycles, whatever. They do it every, every couple of years. They award bids for one year, two, three, five years. They, they can do supplemental agreements. And what that basically does is make it so that every single little town does not have to go and do it. So, so it's an accepted, suspected practice that the state will put all their labor and work into it. They'll solicit the bids, and then it's permissible for us to work off of the state bids that come in. And, you know, and sometimes you can look around. But most of the time, they're doing it in such quantities. But the state does the entire bid process. So there is, there is a solicitation. They send out for it, but it's all through the state. And we just jump on that. There's a site you can go on to see who does what.
I get that, because I'm not going to belabor it. But what's the criteria for getting on that list to bid?
Ask the State of Connecticut what it is, but they solicit the bids.
That's the question.
And just, just for clarification, and as part of the package on the record, that this is actually the Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Program for microcomputers. It's a, is a technology cooperative purchasing program. So it is multi-state, which our town code allows us to participate in.
That's correct.
So one more quick question. This is not technically done, considered waiving a bid?
No, we're, we're not, we're approving a lease.
Approving a lease agreement.
Jumping on a situation that is in good financial interest of the town. That's what you're doing.
We're actually, tonight, we're actually approving the contract because we're going into a multi-year contract.
I get that.
This is, no. So we are not approving the waiving of a bid because we're not, that's not what's before.
So you're not going into a contract, but somehow you're signing up to this company?
No.
You're not signing up to this company?
If you let, I just said, it says, "To consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from the Board of Education to approve a four-year lease agreement between the Town of Branford and Hewlett-Packard American Capital." We're approving a lease agreement. That's what this body's acting on.
Okay.
We're not approving the waiving of a bid because per town code, it allows us to purchase through purchasing cooperatives or the state bid. So the action tonight is to approve this, that we go into a multi-year agreement.
I get that. So the Board of Education comes to you and says, can you approve this arrangement? And you say yes. And the Board of Education goes back and what? Says, we don't want to do it now? And you clearly.
No, we would enter.
Now you enter into the lease. So one way or the other, you're entering to a lease, whether or not you're a pass.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the purpose of this vote, is to give permission.
But in essence, the Board of Selectmen is serving it, serving it as a pass rule. That's what it is. It's really what it is. I mean, because the Board of Education, with all respect, has made up their.
No, this is under, I think it's chapter 42 of the code, Financial Review Obligation, which any contract that is greater than $10,000 or one year requires the Board of Selectmen to vote, vote on it before entering into that agreement.
Okay.
So that's, and, and it does, if you go and read it, which I'm, it also states that there's a, a review by the Board of Finance. So during the budget process, we review that they review, as I mentioned, that the lease agreements are the lease, the financial impact is discussed during the budget process. So they do their financial review. However, before that agreement can be executed, because of chapter 42 of the town code, it being over $10,000 in value and more than one year in term, it requires this board to act.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
But your average person would not know that.
No, so explain.
Do we make a motion to approve?
I don't remember. Motion to approve?
We already seconded.
Yeah, you did? Okay.
Yeah, I just got to say aye.
All in favor?
Wait, no, I can.
No, I don't think you.
I second.
Second it now.
Yeah, second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the percentage. Pass it to the ass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Item 11. To consider, and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. Resolve that.
It's 10.
Oh, good. All right. Item 10. To consider, if appropriate, approve a request from Thomas Mahoney, Fire Chief, to waive the bid of the renovation and remounting of an existing ambulance patient module onto a new 2021 Ford E450 and award the contract to Eastford Fire and Rescue Sales Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $169,748.20. Chief?
Thank you. So the Fire Department, we absolutely respect the, the process. And, and part of that process is to provide the best product at the best price to the citizen, not just the best price. Remounting an ambulance saves us approximately $40,000. And in this case, the amount of work that's getting done in the ambulance essentially will give us a like-new product. To find a vendor who can do that type of work, that's trustworthy and that we are comfortable with, myself and Department Mechanic Dan Geroli put in a great deal of effort in, in, in going out and actually visiting fabrication and places. And, and Eastford Fire Rescue's been a vendor of ours where, you know, when we felt uncomfortable with them, we pulled back from them. And they put forth a good amount of effort to, to show us and to prove to us that they are the, you know, the, the right vendor for this. And we, we did a remount approximately 10 years ago. It was a bid remount. We got the low-bid ambulance, and it's been a disaster. It's sitting downstairs. You're more than welcome to see it. We're still in use as our fifth ambulance. But it really wasn't the best product for the best money. So Dan and I did do our due diligence. We put a lot of time into this. We went up there. We beat the vendor up. We got a really good price. Today, we learned that instead of a 2021 chassis, a brand new, he's now offering us a 22 chassis, brand new, at no additional cost. So for the $169,748.20, I'm asking you to approve the bid waiver to award the contract to Eastford Fire and Rescue Sales for the remounting of the new ambulance. Essentially, it's going to go down south. The body and itself will be going down to the same manufacturer that did our new ambulance. It's going to be all new electrical. Everything's done, painted. It's going to come back, mounted on the new chassis, and then they'll finish it in the shop at, at Eastford, which will then be the local warranty dealer and representative. And it'll be essentially a duplicate unit of the new unit that's down on the floor right now that we bought two years ago.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Move to second. How, how, how much, how many years do you get out of a box, out of the module?
Well, the boxes themselves, this particular box is around 10 years old. We're going to put it in service for another 10 years at least. And we could theoretically continue to remount as long as there's not significant corrosion or, or structural problems with the box itself. And, you know, we, we felt very strongly, as did, you know, when we presented to the Board of Finance, that remounting was a good option, but you really had to find the proper vendor to do it. Because, you know, you could, you could end up with what we've ended up with in the past. So that's why we spent a good deal of time. We went up and visited the three buildings that Eastford has and went through the entire process. We are aware of, you know, there's not a lot of vendors that provide the service, especially locally. And, you know, part of it too is that we end up, through our due diligence and our experience with various vendors, build a trust. And I believe that the, you know, the taxpayer, you know, builds a trust with us as well. We provide, you know, they, they allow us, you know, that leeway to, to try to do the research and learn these things. And, and we are comfortable that this is going to be a fantastic product.
And Chief, does this, does this box already have the lift in it for?
No, no. This is just the ambulance in, in the box.
No, no. But would you put that in?
It will be as part of the.
As part of this?
Yeah, they'll do that up at the, the Eastford shop. But it is not part of the pricing for the, just the ambulance and the module. That's a separate.
Separate. But they'll do it there. All right. All right. So it's been moved second.
Not to be rude, but so this is an example of the department looking at the options and saying, we're going to go with this one because we have experience with this company. We have trusted this company. It's a discretionary thing. But it's a discretionary thing based upon a certain amount of track. That's what I'm hearing. Right? Now, was this a matter of, and again, with all respect to the department, going out and looking at this particular one and then looking at a few others like we just talked about, saying, no, we're going to go with these guys. We know them. They're competitive price-wise, and that's good enough for us.
I, I am aware of, of one other vendor that we, we have some history with. I believe that we would not come close to this price. And again, there's a certain amount of experience and trust that gets built over the years. And that plays a big, a big role. This is a company that really bends over backwards for, for us. When we pulled back, we had a, a contract to do a remount, and we had pulled it back because we had some questions. And we ended up purchasing a new ambulance the last time instead of the remount until we were comfortable. And they went well out of their way to make sure that we were very comfortable with, with that remount. And, you know, I have to respect that. But they, you know, it's not that we were just looking at this one, this one vendor, but the field is very limited, you know what I mean? It's specialized. You know, there's probably a lot of people that say they could do it.
Yeah.
But in reality, to get a like-new product, and that's really what, what we expect, is that we're going to get a like-new product. It'll be on the road for, you know, it goes on the front line for a good six years, and then it starts to back up, you know, as, as the call in the ambulances. So it really has to last.
That's fair. And I'd like to just say one quick thing. I do not mean to be a pain about this. I just think that the bidding process, and this process of waiving a bid, can get complicated for a number of reasons. And we've explored three or four, one of which is just now. You just have confidence in the company. You have a couple of options. You go with the company, but you have a strong track record. I don't see anything wrong with it. But I think it's a fair thing that people know that, well, that's also how a bid process can work. And it can work by looking around at a few people, obviously, and saying, well, I like this one. And it could work by, as the superintendent said, well, you get the best deal because you have volume. So there's a lot of ways around, not around, but there's a lot of ways to handle a bid process, which I think is interesting. To me, it is. And to a, I don't mean to sit here and just up top. That's not like, you know, kind of, just understand how it works so many different ways. Understanding the toll of a lot of cases.
All right. Thank you. All right. So it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the percentage. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
See you, Dan. Item 11. To consider, and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. Resolve that the Town of Branford may enter into, with, and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolve that James B. Cosgrove, as first selectman of the Town of Branford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Branford, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. Discussion. Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the percentage. Pass it to the ass. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 12. To consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from Diana McCarthy-Berkley, Sustainability and Compliance Manager, to waive the bid for the purchase and delivery of a 50-yard open-top roll-off container from East Coast Containers in the amount of $15,475.
Good evening.
Good evening, Diana.
Okay, so this, this is a request that came to me from the gentleman who work at the transfer station. We have five cans. That's what these 50-yard roll-offs are. Sorry, I'm learning as I go here with municipal solid waste terminology. We have five of them down at the transfer station, and we have two different recycling bays. We have the mixed paper, and then we have bottles and cans. We take the five cans that we have and we rotate them in and out of each of those bays. So when one gets full, we call our recycling contractor. They pick up the can. They bring it. They dump it off. And in the meantime, we have another one that comes in there to collect the material. And so that's true for both of them. There's five. Two of the cans have been sidelined because of so much excessive damage. And my understanding from working with the public works team is that there's only so much repair you can do before, you know, they become obsolete. And they're just damaged beyond compare. So we're at that point right now where we have three that are operable and two that are really not. So with that, it means if our mixed paper and newspaper is full, we have to call our hauler to come take it away. We put our spare can in there. If another one gets full and they take it away, we are at a loss, and we have no place to put our recycle. to put our recyclable materials. We could leave it on the curb, but I'm sure the residents would not appreciate that for very long. So this was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago. We looked at the budget to see if we even had funding available for at least one can. I think two is, two is a bit much. This is the organization that we get containers from regularly. So our folks called them to see what the price was. So that's the situation where we're at right now with our recycling operations and with the containers that we have to actually just receive those materials once they're picked up from the curb. So we are in somewhat of an emergency situation that we need another container.
Does this come out of this year's budget or capital?
This year's budget.
So we only have today to do it?
Yeah, so if it approves today, then.
Yeah.
And generally, how long do they last? I'm just generally speaking?
That's a great question.
Do you know, like, how old these other three are or?
Yeah, over 10 years. So, and it's, it's also, you know, how you operate the machinery, right? So if you are into bumper cars, they're not going to last you as long, you know, if you're a careful driver. And all of our, our crew, you know, take meticulous care. One in particular is, this is his passion, to make sure that our cans are in very good shape. So he's the one who noticed it.
But they're taken off the property, right? At some point, right?
Yes.
That's where we don't see what's going on.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, at some point in time, these are out of our hands and out of our control.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. Discussion.
Little question for the director. I don't necessarily have a problem with this. Quite frankly, I don't understand it well enough to have a question, but I have heard a couple of things, and I think this is perhaps the forum to bring it up. I'm just wondering if you could direct the question or someone else. It's floating around out there, and it could be completely false or not, that ultimately what's going to happen is that you will become the full-time sustainability director, and that the town is looking very seriously at contracting out the entire transfer station. Now, I don't know how accurate that is. I don't know how accurate the people who tell me those things are. Obviously, I do hear things, I live in the town. But, you know, with all respect, and I don't know you that well, I don't think you know me other than some of the things that go on in the meetings, but the first thing you did was you moved your office out of the transfer station, down to Town Hall. So that seems to be somewhat of an indication that you see your position more as a sustainability director than you do as a solid waste director.
Well.
Are we heading in the right direction with this question? And I know it doesn't relate to this, but in a way it does.
Well, I know, you can go ahead with your question, but I think that, I think that question should be directed towards me rather than the staff.
Is that where we're going? Are we going towards a full-time sustainability director and contracting out the transfer station independent from what the town does? No, I think that's a fair question.
I'll answer this question because the, as you may know, or we had a supervisor down in that position that supervised three people and oversaw the transfer station. We had a need to have an expanded role where we can capture some other areas of compliance and sustainability. So we took that opportunity, which went through when, when the position became vacant, to expand the position and the role of the position. So in doing so, I felt it was appropriate to bring that position into Town Hall because it does coordinate with a number of other departments, in particular, many within Town Hall, as well as different boards and commissions. So that was a decision that was made prior to Ms. McCarthy being hired as a Sustainability and Compliance Manager. One thing is, I'm sure many have attended meetings, I think there need the better coordination, collaboration between the, as it was intended, with the departments, Public Works and Transfer Station. They are not separate departments. However, I think for many years, they have acted independently, and I think that creates a number of inefficiencies in a number of areas. We are working to address that. I think to your other question regarding contracting out the operations, that is not something that the town has brought forward or considered. At this time, we're looking to improve operations as they stand now with the current.
I'll go with that to a certain extent, but then again, this has nothing to do with the ladies present, but I don't think it's any secret that I've been a pretty strong voice for the fact that she and another individual designed the entire energy plan for the new animal shelter. I guess my question becomes, how thin can you push her position? I mean, if she's doing all these things in addition to designing a major component of an animal shelter, you know, then how much are you trying to get from one individual without getting too far?
Well, again, I think we have, we have, I know we have a job description that covers a number of areas of, as I said, compliance and sustainability. And I believe we have a person, Ms. McCarthy, that is, can meet that requirement and has been, done a tremendous job this past year. Actually, I think you just hit it one year.
Today.
Today.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. As far as, as far as your statement, as far as designing and things, that is not the role, nor so that statement isn't an accurate statement or reflection on the work of what, of what the Sustainability and Compliance Manager does.
Well, then I'm sorry, because she shouldn't have been doing it because I had all the emails to say that her and Greg Ainge were extremely, you know, active in that role, extremely active in that role. Matter of fact, I think they were the main people representing the town. So don't tell me on one hand that she has no, you know, role in designing this animal shelter energy plan, because that's just not true. I mean, I got the email. So what, you want me to produce those? I'm just saying, again, it has nothing to do with the ladies, she's been here less than a year. But how thin are you going to make these positions? And are you just doing it so that you're setting it up to be, well, now it's one, now it's two positions, but it won't be too long before it's two positions? Or we go somewhere else? We got, we got a full-time sustainability, you know, director because we know that's what you want. And then we also have to contract out the town transfer station because, well, that just has to go along with it, and we have to keep that running too. Those are fair questions. Whether or not you have the answers right now, well, we'll see, but I think they're fair questions.
Yeah, fair questions. We'll look into that. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Nice.
Item 13, to hear and report from Brian Devlin, Superintendent of Waste Water Treatment Facility, concerning emergency work necessary to keep the central pump station online due to two failed pumps. Brian.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we had an issue at central pump station all three weeks ago. Out of the three pumps, I lost two pumps. They went down. The only one running, I had a problem with that. I got that back running. The pumps pump about 5 million gallons a day. That's what they handle. It's a huge, our biggest pump station. So what I did, I had to call, and I had, we had, there's only a couple of companies out there that supply diesel pumps that can handle that size of volume of pumping. So this particular company, they had a company, they have a place in New Jersey and up in their lead yard. So they got, I had to use them for a week, seven days while the pumps are being repaired. One of the two pumps came back seven days. That's up and running. I've got two pumps now. The third one should be ready next week. And the cost for the two pumps, the labor and everything for that seven days for the two diesel pumps that handle 5 million gallons per day was $36,809. Now, if I didn't do that and I lost the last pump, it would have been a mess. The DEP would have been on me, so I had to do it. So right now, we're good to go. We're back. We had rag issues, the two pumps. We had to repair about three, four years ago, they're 20 years old, the pumps themselves. So over the last 20 years, they were repaired a few times. So that, that's where, why I'm in front of the board right now. And there was a many, I didn't have time, there's only a few companies that do these pumps this big. So that's where I was at there.
So Brian, you replaced two.
Yeah.
Because the two that went down?
Yeah, the two that are bad, one's back and running, the original one's back, that's good, the third one should be back next week. So we have two pumps there now. And right now, the biggest problem out there is logistics. When they do repair, they're 90 horsepower pumps. They get the parts and everything. They used to take two weeks, sometimes take three to four to five weeks. The emergency one he did in one week, we were very lucky, they went out down towards New York, they repaired it, was a Flight pump. Those are the better pumps out there. We have a good track record with Flight. So I didn't, if I went out to another company, they would have to go to Flight to buy the parts, and then they'd mark it up on you. So that's why I went directly to Flight on that. And they did a good job on it.
Yeah, but, yeah, thanks. And one question I have though, the two that failed, you replaced those or repaired those, and the third one that didn't, is that, what's the condition? Does that have to be pulled? Are they going to do some maintenance?
Yeah, that's, that's being repaired now. So right now, I have the two, the two are on now.
Yeah, okay.
That should be coming back soon.
All right.
So I would assume, sir, that you are being proactive and, because these are old systems, right? These sewers and these pumps, they've been in existence a long time. You said some of them are 20 years old.
Yeah, this station's 20 years old, and we did have it rebuilt about five years ago, Central, and it's our biggest station, and we have other stations done that. So if I did lose that, it would have been a mess, it would have been really bad news. And it would take a, it did take a day or two just to get it set up, the eight-inch lines into the area, so that's what happened. I didn't get no sleep that night, but we're good. We can lose nothing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I guess we're just.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, accept the report. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Item 14, to consider if appropriate, approve a request from Brian Devlin, Superintendent of Waste Water Treatment Facility, to waive the bid for the purchase of 90 horsepower dry pit submersible pump at the cost of $25,665.
Yeah, that would be the pump that's being repaired now?
Yep.
That's out right now being repaired.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider, item 15, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Brian Devlin, Superintendent of Waste Water Treatment Facility, to waive the bid for the purchase of 19 horsepower, 180 rpm landia mixer at the cost of $19,951.
Yes, this is part of our process, the oxidation dishes, we had four mixers, and the landia mixers, we, they were put in in 2001. We repaired them about four times apiece. Last month, I was down to no mixers. Now, the mixers have to work in line with our process with the mixed liquors, and if they don't, if they're not working, our process kind of goes to hell on us. So I, I have a spare one, but being that they're 20 years old, landia's been, we have all landia. I try to keep what I have in there as, keeping a uniform with the pumps, the mixers, and I, landia's been pretty good with us. We had good luck with them, so I want to get a new one because that's why I have, I'll put it in as soon as I get it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. Discussion. Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 16, to, thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Item 16, to consider if appropriate, rate the taxes on list, 9870191 Shore Beach Road, owned by Hospice.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved.
I'll second. I knew you were thinking it.
Yeah, yeah, I was just, seconded. Discussion. Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you vote in favor?
Yeah, in favor.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, passing the answer, thank you.
Item 17, green use, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the Branford Compassion Club for the use of the town green on October 3, 2021, from noon to 5:00 p.m. to hold Animal Awareness Day. They're sharing this with the James Blackstone Memorial Library.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passing the answer.
18, to consider if appropriate, approve a request from the Friends of the Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library for the exception as permitted by Section 115-3, the code town of Branford allows serving of wine at an art exhibit on July 18, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
19, reappointments, Board of Finance, Jeff Valet and Harry DiAdamo's term to expire July 31, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Moves.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Another question, please.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, a couple of things on this take me a minute or two. You know, I attended the animal shelter here, even the last couple of weeks or so. Sometimes I wonder, and I'm just being honest when I say this, if we even need a Board of Finance? Because, you know, I put together over 100-page booklet, which I thought was, you know, pretty well-done, thoroughly. I don't think any of them picked it up. They never asked questions. I think, you know, I know Jeff, but I've known him for a long, long time. I don't think that I've heard Jeff ask three questions in three years. And as far as Harry goes, I don't know him that well. Board of Finance sits there, and it seems to do, I'm not even sure what they do. And I say it to them, and it almost seems like, why do we need them? Because it seems like the answer comes from Jeff Finch, through you, to them, and that's going to be what they decide. And that's the way I honestly see it, because they gave no consideration whatsoever to a great deal of thought, not just I put into it, but other citizens put into this, and they just let it go, like it doesn't matter. Now, is the Board of Finance there to say, like, oh, we have enough money, so go ahead and take your 4.5 million and buy the animal shelter? Or are they there to look at the issue and say, you know, there could be a few problems with it? Because I told them very clearly, and I went to the, the, the public building commission, would you put in place a certain amount to your credit? And I said, wait a minute, you know, it should start with the building commission. It shouldn't start with the Board of Finance. They don't know construction, they don't know contracting, and then they're sitting out there like, oh, we're looking at all these budgets, like, they actually, you know, have an understanding of it? No, they don't. They have no understanding of it. But still, they go ahead and pass 4.5 million dollars. There's something inherently wrong with that system. It's got to be somehow reversed, or something's got to be fixed because it's wrong. I mean, I'm very resentful when I, you saw, I gave all of you one of these. It's a pretty well-put-together booklet. I went through five years of minutes of the animal shelter. I mean, I don't make this stuff up. Did they open it? I doubt it. I don't think they even care. So why even bother? Why, you know, and then they give citizens 10 minutes, and then, you know, you get 10 minutes to talk to be in a meeting, and then you go on about the solar. And there were so many things I wanted to say in return, because I thought you were completely wrong about so many things, and I couldn't say a word. Well, that's not democracy. I'm sorry. You don't give somebody 10 minutes to talk, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, and then 45 minutes to let everybody else talk, and then they have to be quiet because there's no chance for rebuttal or anything else. It, it, it's just wrong. Now, are you going to, obviously, reappoint Jeff and Harry? Of course you're going to do it. But don't cling for a minute, and I'm going to take this up with the chairman, you know, at the next meeting, because this is, this is a very big issue, you know? There's three primary boards in this town, well, four, I would say. Obviously, Selectmen, RTM, former board, Board of Finance, and the Board of Education. Two of them, including this one, allow interaction during agenda items, as it should be, at Two of them, including this one, allow interaction during agenda items, as it should be, at least some give and take. Two of them do not. And those two should change their policy because there was plenty of times I wasn't going to engage you. I just wanted to know what we were talking about, you know, in that particular case. Same with the Board of Education. I think that there's had to be, and you saw what I read last night, it's clearly in the Supreme Court that we can say whatever we want and we should be able to say whatever we want, whenever we want, as long as it's within reason. But I'll tell you, two of these places, Board of Finance, and I'll finish up here, and the Board of Education does not do that and it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. So go ahead, you know, point Jeff, point Harry, that's fine with me. But I'm just saying, sometimes I wonder what purpose they serve because they never ask questions. They never even give you the acknowledgement that they even received your question. They say, ah, well, thanks, then, you know, we'll see you in a couple of years. It's insulting. It really is.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Inland Wetlands, Eric Rose, term to expire May 31, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move, seconded.
He's got his handle.
Another comment, please. We're almost done, so I can keep going. You know, here's the thing about the Inland Wetlands. I was in their meeting too. Much easier with Zoom, but now you're going to go in your car and go places. But they're working on a, I don't even know what it is exactly, it's a checklist of how they want their independent peer reviews to be outlined and what the content should be and all this and all that. And I sat there and I said, you know, guys, that's not your problem. All right, good for you for trying to get a full list of what the content should be and what you want to see in the peer review. But the answer, and I'm sorry if I got to stand up for it, man. Excuse me. The answer is, quite frankly, and I want to present this, is the process. I mean, about it, you can put anything you want in peer review, but when you're done with it, you're not supposed to have a director of the Inland Wetlands Commission go ahead and doctor it so their costs go to nothing. I'm sorry, that's just wrong. That's why we're in federal court. So I brought that up in front of the, you know, the Inland Wetlands Commission, want to add to that, and I'm on a roll, so I might as well. Then you, with all respect, first selection, promise, you know this, thorough investigation? You haven't seen it. You won't even show it to your other two selection. Not only that, you won't show it to community. Not only that, our attorneys, now that we're in federal court, this subpoena can't even get it. We have to get something called a motion to compel for you to turn over this investigation of what happened with the fraud during the inland weapons overflow, over Costco. I mean, what kind of nonsense is this? See, people, here's the thing, people don't know this. Why don't they know it? Because they don't quite have the time that I do, particularly now that I'm not feeling really well. But also, you know, they have families and they have jobs and they have problems. They don't know what goes on in this town. Well, I do. And that's one of them. You know what you don't have Costco? Because frauds. And none of it is fraud, but you covered it up. It's that simple. And we'll show it. Everyone knows it, but we'll show it. So you can sit there and smirk all day long.
I'm not smirking, I just like, can we just stick to the reappointment? We're sticking with the re-
I understand what you're doing. You're appointing people to these inland wetlands commissions and you're reappointing them.
Yes, sir.
But I wish you would appoint people that would take some sort of true interest in what goes on, not just because they want to show up and just say they're on the inland wetlands board, but really take an interest in what a guy like Cook is saying. Because I'm not wrong. And that's what goes on in this town. People don't understand that and it's not their fault. It really is. You've got a handful of people like me that take an interest or that have time to take an interest, but the reality is fraud was committed clearly.
We're going to-
And here's the point. No, I'm not going to mount on you. It's definitely this town.
I'm not, just asking to, I'm actually to stick to the, stick to their point.
I'm sticking to the point. I wish you would appoint people that care, that really take an interest in care. Now, I don't know these people. Maybe, you know, they're the greatest people in the world, but I've seen too many people in this town that think, they don't care. They don't care. And the reality is, and I'll say this, and you know I'll keep saying this because I've been saying this for the last five years, fraud was committed and you covered it up, period. End of discussion. And we'll see. And everyone knows it because it's right there. That's not my writing on that independent peer review, that's Diana Ross's writing.
All right. So it's been, has it been moved and seconded?